All right, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Community Development Humor Services Committee meeting for Tuesday, October 28th. I'm Jason Winston, Chair of the Committee. I am joined by my colleagues to my lap, my left, Councilmember Norwood, to my far right, Councilmember Westmoreland, and to my immediate right, Vice Chair Jason Dozier. This does constitute a quorum, so I officially call this meeting to order. I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Norwood. Can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
All right, colleagues, you've had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from our last meeting, so I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dozier. If he can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Thank you, and we've been joined by Councilmember Andrea Boon. This does take us to the public comment section of our agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes. We'll give you a gentle reminder when you're getting close to the end of the time. Our first speaker is Henry Jordan.
Give me not your spirit of God, everyone that's here, but the natural man receives not the things with the spirit of God, for they are foolishness unto him. Neither can he know them because they are spiritually discerned. First Corinthians 2nd, Chapter 14, verse: "Natural man, unspiritual man, is unreceptive; he does not admit the truth in his heart." James Griffin is a fleshly man that leads to death. "If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven, and will forgive their sin, and will hear their land." 2 Chronicles 7, Chapter 14, verse. This verse stands as a high expression of God's loving readiness to hear the prayers of a repentant people. Do you have a repentant heart? Deliver me, oh my God, out of the hand of the wicked, out of the hand of the unrighteous and cruel man. Psalm 7, Chapter 4, verse. The psalm is clearly the prayer of an elderly man threatened by his enemies. James Griffin, you have proven to be my enemy. The Lord told me to work with you is to ask for death. Let your light so shine before men, that they may see your good works, and glorify our Father, which is in heaven. St. Matthew 5, Chapter 16, verse. He is the condition salt, to meet the world needs, as he has a mission like to the world. I cannot give you the glory for myself. These actions stop the good works. If you do not seek to glorify God, then you reject Jesus' power to help you. We need Jesus' power to help us. We don't need to reject the power of God in our lives, of what He offered us to have for deliverance. I know that I need Him. That's when I speak to please Him. I'm living on His time. We're living on God's time, not our own time. He made us to serve Him, not ourselves, not our flesh, but Jesus Christ. And He lets you know that you need Him, by the trials and tribulations that we go through. And we see the devil doing work Himself that would destroy one another. Obey Jesus.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Helen D. Williams, and you'll have three minutes. We've been joined by Council President Doug Shipman.
Good afternoon. My name is Helen D. Williams. I am a member of the Vine City residents. I have now become a community activist on my own with God's will. I'm standing before you today to speak about the event that happened this weekend, Clark's Homecoming, which was a wonderful event. But on the outside of the event, it became a little concerning. And what I mean by that is, I had mentioned to Mr. Amos that we can have some type of format to introduce all the entrepreneurs, the rules of doing business or having business with the city. This particular incident, as always in our community, brings on a greatness of entrepreneurship, people selling sodas, just basically selling a lot of food, but they don't have license to do that. So my thing is, is that most of the officers, or a few, ate at these locations on Friday. Taste their food. The food was wonderful. On Saturday was the day of the event, so of course that brought a slew of more people. And then the community had this event where a lot of people was moving around and buying and participating. So here comes this phone call, shut it down. What does that mean? That means anybody who was not having a vending permit had to shut their situation down and move off of, i.e. maybe private property or close to the sidewalks. So that just turned everything around for a lot of people. I stood at one particular location, which was across from Ms. Abernathy's historical site. I sat there just to observe how the officers was handling this particular situation. The commander in chief said, basically, shut them down. They walked and told the people they had to leave, they had to pack all their things up, and they had to do it right now. Two officers were somewhat aggressive with the situation. I guess what I'm pointing out is that when we have these events in our communities, with the city coming in to, to, what's the word I want to use, in order to find everything, why don't they come with their paperwork also? Share the information. They, listen, you're not doing this, this particular way. Here is the better way to do that. It's not their job to hand this information out. But it also encouraged people to do, do business the right way, for one, and then to serve the city, to get more people on board with the vending that's going to happen. And here it is, we're about to move into an area where food is about to be the number one issue on everybody's plate. Why not let them come out and vend, so we can all make money and eat?
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams, for your, your comments today. So that does conclude the public comment section of our agenda. We do have two presentations today. I think the first one will just be a verbal update from Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority. We'll welcome up Executive Director Mr. Kerry Stewart.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Winston, and Honorable Committee Members. I'm Kerry Stewart, the Executive Director for Atlanta and Fulton County Recreation Authority, and I would like to provide you with a update. So let's begin with the Johnny White Golf and Senior Activities Center. It was funded, the construction is funded by a $25 million bond issued by the city and my office. We're doing the construction under two phases. Phase one is site work, and it is almost complete. They're pulling the retaining walls now for the parking lot, and that should be completed by mid-December. The RFP for vertical construction, which will be our phase two, the RFP was issued in September. It should be completed in November, and we'll choose a contractor, and that contractor will begin the vertical construction in January. The golf course is in great shape. It looks like it's closed, so revenues are taking a dip due to that, but that should get back on track by spring, once we clear up some of the miles of dirt that's down on the driving range. Next up is an update on the, it's our Community Investment Initiative, and we call it the AFRA Play It Forward Grants. There is grant season right now. It opened December, I'm sorry, October 1st, and it'll run through December 31st. In 2024, we invested roughly $460,000 to grantees, and we had 60 grantees that were awarded. And for 2025, we are estimating that number will grow to roughly a million dollars. And these grants go to organizations that are, that apply, and they service areas of sports, recreation, arts, and culture. In addition to that initiative, we also have grant that we issue on the board level. And for over the last 12 months, that would be investments like the, towards the construction of the Civil and Human Rights Museum, Forbes' BLK Summit, SWAC, and SIAC Basketball Tournaments, and First T of Metro Atlanta. Next up is the LGBTQ Cultural Center Feasibility. That was a, an initiative that was funded by the city and is housed in my office, and it was for 12 months, so we're coming to it in, in December. And to date, they have nearly 3,000 responses to their impact survey, and 97% of those responses are positive. The input from these surveys will go into the Impact Study feasibility, the Impact Feasibility Study, and it'll be presented to the city in December. Now on to other general operations and property status. State Farm Arena is my major asset that I manage, and we had the season opener on, on October 22nd. And also, the, the Hawks completed a recent capital improvements program on State Farm Drive. They expanded parking to roughly 70 spaces. They completed that in the off-season, in time for the opener, and in time for FIFA next year. Now, because the Hawks are responsible for half of the debt, I monitor their debt service coverage ratio. Their requirement is 1.5 times. These past quarter, they were at six, so they're doing well there, and it's no concern. Next up is Gateway Parking Deck in Grand Park. AAA operates the deck on my behalf, and it's operating on par. The only difference is, is five years old now, and I'm seeing more repair needs. Next up is Zoo Atlanta. Zoo Atlanta, over the last 12 months, they completed construction on the Animal Health Center, and it's open and operating. They are currently constructing the panda habitat, so that was a requirement that they had to meet in order for the pandas to come back. Also, during the last 12 months, we sold Centennial Deck, Parking Deck, also known as the Ruby Lot, to CIM. And the parking is still available to Hawks in other events, but the asset is no longer owned by my office. And as far as update on Fanplex, we had an ad hoc committee meet to decide what to do with Fanplex, and their recommendation is to put it up for sale. And that recommendation will go to the full board on November 10th. That concludes my update, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Kerry. Any questions, comments, Councilmember Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good to see you, Kerry, as always. Thank you for being responsible on some of the issues we've talked about with, I know we had a sheltered friend over at the Grey Lot that made a nice little habitat over there, and y'all were very helpful, and making sure he got pointed in the right direction. I know I usually ask about Grey Lot and Orange Lot and disposition of that, and I'm gonna still keep poking the bear on that and seeing what we can do to get both the city, the county, as well as our friends over at Georgia State, align in a, a better vision for that site that is additive to the Kansville community. So I'm still gonna work on that. I'm not gonna ask you about it, because I know where things are kind of at with, organizationally with you all. But I did have a question about State Farm Arena. I know with World Cup, you know, everybody's firing all cylinders trying to get ready for World Cup. I know we just reopened Garnet Marta Station earlier this week. My understanding is there's gonna be some anticipated work at the Sports and Entertainment and Convention District Station, I guess is what it's being renamed to, the State Farm slash Georgia Dome slash yada, yada, yada. Do you know that it's impacting Africa's operations anyway? And then separately, do you know if State Farm Arena is planning any sort of activations ahead of World Cup, recognizing that, I know Centennial yard is racing against the clock, South Downtown and others, but do you know if there's anything planned for State Farm Arena specifically ahead of World Cup, or a part of World Cup?
Your first question about the Marta Station, the Hawks have been in contact with them about that and making sure that construction doesn't impede access. Other than that, that platform belongs to Marta. It's not part of my property, so I haven't been in those talks.
Okay.
As far as activating the site, they are planning, the, the information's been shared with me, they're planning their own venues right now, like concerts or special events during that timeframe. Last communication I had, I don't think FIFA was planning that space, so they started being proactive and planning it themselves.
Okay. And the main reason why I ask is I know the former CNN Center, now the Center, quote unquote, is working on trying to have some of their activations ready for World Cup, and State Farm is kind of in between Mercedes-Benz and former CNN Center, so I can imagine that might be an opportunity to have some additional overflow or activations or something that would, I know basketball season isn't really happening in June and July, but I just, I just was curious.
Hopefully, we get some, some action in June.
Okay, okay. Well, you know.
But not July. They are planning to do activations. I just don't know the details.
Okay.
I don't think they know the details yet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ayew, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? You mentioned some, the Gateway and Grand Park was in need of some, I guess, I don't know, there'd be routine repairs. Can you just describe the nature of some of the repairs that are going?
Routine repairs. The office there, I just got an email today, it's leaking.
Okay.
It leaked before, and it was another issue coming from the bottom. If we compare that now, it's leaking from the top.
So nothing structurally on the top, or any?
Don't know. I think I got my engineer. He's going out there today.
Okay.
We also had, like, three cameras down, so we had to replace those, and you had to wait on them to come in, so that took like, you know, a month. But things like that is, that we didn't see two years ago.
And then Fanplex, obviously, you have a board meeting, you said, on November 10th, to discuss selling. I guess they'll put up for a vote. If the board approves that, then what are next steps in identifying a buyer?
Next steps will identify an agent, a broker, to represent, and then properly market it.
Okay. Do you have any timeline where you anticipate that happening early next year, or?
I imagine we can get that done by January, at least start marketing by January.
Okay. And then lastly, on some of the grants you talked about, how can we point folks in the right direction to, to apply for those by the end of the year when they, when that deadline expires?
You go to www.afragrant.com.
Okay.
Or social media is AfraGrant also.
Okay. All right. Well, we appreciate you being here today, seeing there's no other questions, comments. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so our next presentation, we're gonna welcome up Dr. Eloisa Clementic, proud CEO and President of Best Atlanta.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Yes, Eloisa Clementic. So today, I'm going to provide an update, a quarterly update, on some of the programs. In specific, we're gonna go over the KPIs, then I'll go over the water grants that we're working now, and then lastly, I'll end up with some TAD, recent TAD projects that we've been able to award. So our KPIs from January to September 30th, Invest Atlanta has hit their total capital investment of, surpassing our goal of $930 to $976 million. But I think the most important one that I look at is the total economic impact. So what is the direct, indirect, and induced result of the funding that we are able to support? Of those projects, and if you look to the right, you could see the map where all the different projects are throughout the city. Most of the, or I should say, 17% of them have been in what we've deemed as Atlanta's disinvested neighborhoods, which is pretty much south of I-20. We also watch our customer service satisfaction score. It's very important for us that people feel like we are being responsive, and we, our goal this year is 4.3, and we are at an average client satisfaction score of 4.6. So I'm excited about what the team has been able to do and the service that we're able to provide to those that we serve here in the city. If we look at the breakdown of our capital investment, our capital investment breaks down into several key portions. The first is through CPACE. This is a financing tool that we've been able to work with through the state, and it provides capital financing opportunities for those that want to retrofit or energy efficiency programs in their buildings. So to date, we've been able to deploy $25.4 million. Of the 1,180 total affordable housing units financed, that's about 62% of our goal. We are continually focused on that 1,900, which is our goal for affordable housing. Our new jobs are at 3,094. We're about 88% of our goal. We continue to work, and we think we will have a path forward to hitting our goal by the end of the year. Our homeownership incentives, this is really one of the most exciting tools that we have. It's at 617, with 140 down payment assistance, 52 owner occupied rehab, and then 425 anti-displacement. And I'm gonna go into that just a little bit further in my presentation. So the small business recovery grants, this specific grant was for those businesses impacted a long cascade, and this was really due to both water and sewer maintenance enhancements that were required down the corridor. There were three, there are three components to our program. The first is a cash grant of $50,000. Second component is a technical assistance component of $10,000. And the third component is a one-time reimbursable grant for order mitigation to support the installation of what is a P-trap in the place for the business. Applications opened up for Component One on September 2nd and closed on September 30th. We received a total of 27 applications, of which we, at the end of September, so we have been going through them in this month of October and getting sure all of the documents were in place. 24 have been approved. Two are in review, and one was denied because the business no longer is on cascade. And what we, what I'm glad to report to you today is that we are excited that we think that we are gonna disperse somewhere around $1.2 million. And checks for half of those 24 that have approved are actually in the mail today, so it's all because of you guys that the checks were, that's coincidental. The checks will be going out today to, to about half of the 24 that were approved, so excited to see that moving forward. And Phase Two, which is that technical assistance component, will begin in November, November 1st, and they have until December to use that. And this year, we've really focused on what we've heard, which is we've put them in buckets as needs and businesses, and we've got financial planning, business planning, website design, and marketing. And we've put these packages together, and then the business choose, chooses what makes more sense for them. There's many programs that we offer here at Invest Atlanta, but one that I love to go and talk to the seniors about is this anti-displacement tax relief program. It is really why I love what I do here at the city. So what this program does in a nutshell, we will create an artificial ceiling for a homeowner on their taxes. So for an example, if you earn, if you pay right now $100 on taxes, you will pay $100 for the next 20 years. The way we do that is, you pay your $100, and the fund pays the differential. And so this program, why is it so important? I had the honor to go to many of our informational sessions and talk to seniors, and we shared a couple tears together because I heard stories about how difficult it is for some of these seniors on fixed incomes, as you know, are to pay the increase in taxes. And so to be able to do something like this is really, it really is an honor for the entire Invest Atlanta team. So where are we? We have 425 senior homeowners that are currently in the program, and you can see them throughout the map of where they are. They really are almost throughout the entire city and every district. Nineties, this year, we had to recertify 97 from the 2024. That's last year's program, and we have 328 new this year. If you look at the demographics, you see that we're really hitting the folks that we want to hit, which is 78% female, 81% black or African American, and 79% single household. And the average age is 73 years old. Oh, not old. I say wise now, 73 years of wisdom. And our oldest recipient, excuse me, our wisest recipient is 104. So we're really excited for her being part of our program. This just gives you a sense. This is not everyone. I was sending out a full report, but this, the districts where we had the highest concentration. And one of the things that I do want to highlight is the highest, the And one of the things that I do want to highlight is the highest, in council district four, the recipient with the highest increase in taxes in one year was 2,781. So if you think about a senior on fixed income, this program is even more essential. So if we look at our tax allocation district, I'm going to provide a quick update on just some of the activity for this last quarter that we've been able to do and fund for our tax allocation district. We have eight active TADS. And just as a reminder, the TADS are really focused on these three buckets. And really it's the only public financing tool that impacts the retention of jobs, small businesses and helping them to provide otherwise inaccessible financing. It's very unique for us to use this tool and to really reactivate some of those open public spaces. So we had, this slide provides you with an overview. We have seven TADS that have been represented this, thus far, 34 projects representing 77.5 million in tax increment financing that we've been able to deploy. And again, one of the favorite numbers I watch is that economic impact. So not only are we making that investment, but how does it impact the rest of the community? This provides just a visual, so you see where all the TADS are that we've been able to, excuse me, where all the projects are within the TADS that we've been able to do this thus up until third quarter of this year. Now, this one isn't for you to read, but it's more of a take home so that the people, if they have any direct questions about each of the TADS and each of the projects that we've awarded. But let me go really quickly into some of the TADS that we, some of the projects that we've been able to award this quarter. The first image on top is South Broad Street. This is in downtown. It's three blocks, city blocks, from the Five Points MARTA Station to Garnet MARTA Station. The station plaza will be rebuilt as an active, safe and inviting public realm. The project will include improved connections between MARTA Station and incorporating safety enhancement throughout the streetscape. This is a signature piece of public infrastructure. It is part of catalytic development for Soto or South Downtown. This will support programming for the large events or large stadium events as well as community festivals and creating that vibrant activity center for South Downtown neighborhoods. A $3 million East Side TAD grant was awarded to augment the funding that was already put into this project. The bottom image, it shows a new construction of a mixed-use development at 1283 West in the Beltline TAD, at 1283 Marietta. This is a large 80 million dollar project that will create 238 multifamily units, 48 of which will be at 50% AMI, area median income and below. The project will also include 7,500 square feet of ground floor retail. And there was a $3 million Beltline TAD was awarded to make this project happen. The top slide shows a new construction of 112 units of deeply affordable housing in Mechanicsville neighborhood. This is part of the city's rapid housing initiative. The land is owned by the city and will be leased to Partners for Home on a long-term basis. The project will utilize modular off-site construction, which will allow for the project completion of Q1 2026. Full development plan for the Cooper Street project includes additional 74 sale townhomes to be delivered in a subsequent development phase. A $3 million stadium TAD grant was awarded for this nearly 17 million development project. The bottom image shows the conceptual plan for the anticipated redevelopment of the 24 acres of underutilized commercial property near the Greenbrier Mall on the Headland Drive. The developer envisions a two-phase development into a denser mixed-use community with a reconfigured retail space and over 1,000 multifamily residential units. At least 15% of all the residential units at 80% AMI and 20% of all the retail commercial space at 80% of market rate for local independent businesses. The top slide shows the complete renovation of a vacant small commercial building in South Downtown into a new Altisoro Restaurant, location just down the street from 171 Mitchell. A $50,000 East Side TAD Small Business Improvement Grant was awarded to help the local business owner build out the $2.7 million project. This is a very exciting investment as the restaurant is a local success story with its original location in Edgewood neighborhood and its second location in Liam White on the West End. This project activates a key property at the intersection of Broad and Mitchell Street at the center of the South Downtown redevelopment. The bottom image is a 20-unit infill development of two vacant residential lots on James P. Brawley in English Avenue neighborhood. The developer has been a resident of the English Avenue community for more than a decade and began construction redevelopment homes in the neighborhood in 2007. We are always very happy to support small local developers, helping to increase the access to quality affordable housing. A $1 million West Side TAD grant was awarded to this 4.5 million investment into the neighborhood. Of the 20 units, 16 will be affordable anywhere from 60% AMI to 80% AMI, again, area median income for 30 years. In closing, just want to say that the TAD-funded projects directly impact people and the residents and employees of the city and Fulton County. I can't overstate how difficult some of these financing projects are, these projects are right now in today's environment and financing. And they're very, very complex. Infill residential, mixed-use projects and disinvested neighborhoods and corridors. Conversion of vacant and blighted property into needed vital community services like healthcare, job training and health, healthy food access. These are priority areas of focus that make our neighborhoods thrive. We are committed to improving our communities and using the TAD as a way to develop our neighborhoods. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Clemente. We'll start with questions from colleagues, Councilmember Doja.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you as always, Dr. Clemente. I only have one question as regards to the anti-displacement tax relief program. If you can go back to the map real quick. I'm just curious on how the engagement and outreach for that went and the, kind of the process y'all went through for that. Looking at the distribution on, on the district four map in particular, it looks like there's a lot of activity and utilization of this program within Neighborhood Planning Unit S, but Neighborhood Planning Unit T, which includes West End, Ashtray Heights, just us, a lot of very historic neighborhoods didn't seem to participate at all. And I don't know, I know our office sent out information, but I was just curious what the engagement was like with the NPUs. Or it's just an interesting kind of donut that I see there. And I'm just curious if you can unpack that a bit as far as how that engagement went.
We set the city out in quadrants, I think it was six quadrants or six, four or six quadrants and literally held public meetings at each of the rec centers, key rec centers in each of them on different days and different times. So we tried one on weekends, thought that might be easier. We've done things at, in the evenings. But what we noticed is for seniors, usually in the mornings, so we tend to do the mornings. We then did a couple virtual because what we knew is that there are some seniors that will have their kids or some relative will be tuning in. So we had some, several virtual options as well. And then we recorded them so that you were able to watch them if you wanted to go back and see what, what it was or what did you need to apply. And then we also had more sessions where we actually brought our computers and helped people apply and said, hey, bring all your documents and we have like an application day so that it would be as easy as possible for folks. And I can get you the exact list of exactly where we were on the date, but we were trying to be very conscious of trying to hit the seniors when we knew they could get a ride and then have flexible after-work hour sessions where we were available so that if parent, if children were helping them or a caregiver, it would probably be more likely during the evening. So really a mixture of both for us to go. I will tell you that it, we try to be as flexible as possible and try to ensure that, that we made ourselves as available as possible. And, oh, and I should add, we send out a mailer to every single, so we went old school too, you know, get everybody a postcard about, hey, this program's available, these are different option dates to hear. So really try to, and we did a lot on social, Facebook, a lot of our seniors like Facebook. So, you know, we're trying to just meet people where they are.
No, that's helpful. And I mean, it's just interesting, like my south end communities, Venetian Hills especially, or even in District 12, Sylvan Hills, who's, that's where you have the most heat in that heat map that you have there. So clearly there's a lot of engagement and outreach there. But just north of that, and like I said, in West End and Ashtray Heights, there's been, there was no, seems to imply that there was less interest in the program, which I, you know, knowing my constituents, knowing my neighbors, there's a lot of pressure because of the Beltline and a lot of pressure that's coming, that we know is coming because of the mall West End redevelopment. And so as we think about the next round, I will love to be more connected with the outreach efforts that y'all are thinking about to try to see what I can do to get more folks in our.
And what I'll do too is I'm going to send you a list or maybe a map that shows where everyone who applied, because this, what you're seeing are those that were awarded.
That's fair.
We have about 350, if my memory serves me correct, that applied and would have been awarded had I had enough money. So we are out fundraising now for this program because I cannot use taxpayer dollars for this program. So it really is through contributions from our philanthropic community.
That's helpful. So yeah, looking forward to what the next round of that looks like. And then just, I guess, on a similar note, what are we thinking as far as refilling the coffers for the legacy business program and the grant? I thought the event that we did a couple of weeks ago was phenomenal. I think it was, it was very, you know, the social media push that y'all did for that, I had folks coming to me, like, hey, Councilman Doja, how do I get involved? How do we get, you know, this looks great, we want to be invited to the next one, right? And, you know, I said this during, during my remarks for that, you know, we, we awarded 20 legacy businesses with grants, but we know we have more than 400 across the city who are part of, actively part of the program. And I know that's going to take time, energy and effort to, like I said, refill our coffers and make sure that we can make those distribution happens in a much sustainable way. What are y'all thinking as far as kind of the next phase of this program? Work and city council assists in making it even more robust? You know, I don't know if CFO Bala is listening, but I want to, you know, maybe I'll do another $900,000 donation, but we'll figure that out. But I just kind of want to get a sense of what y'all are thinking.
Yeah. I would say the first thing is getting the word out that we start trying to reach. I mean, literally, we've been calling all the legacy businesses to get them in our platform. I think one of the ways we see most value is to drive business to the business. And so I want to thank my colleagues at the airport. They have said that they are going to help us push out the legacy map. So think about, you know, usually when you go into another city, you're like, I want to taste the best, you know, sweet potato pie in Atlanta. And I'll tell you where that is later. But where do I find it from a business that's been here for years and years? And they just don't know how to find them. So we're really excited about how do I drive more business to these legacy businesses in our city? And so that's our prime role right now is how do I ensure I can do that? And then loans, I've always offered that, just make sure that they understand that we do have a loan portfolio in-house, if that's, or any business really, if that's something they're interested in. But really just trying to do the best we can to get the word out and have more people go to their shops.
No, thank you. And every time I'm in a room with the Wells Fargo or JP Morgan Chase or any other financial institution, I am speaking the praises of the program and of y'all and of y'all's administration of the program. So definitely want to continue to be an ambassador to try to get some of our private partners to recognize how important this is to our city and, you know, in my opinion, to the region and to the country, you know, we want to be the best example of what this sort of program can and should be. And we got to make sure we have the, the resources available to keep it moving forward. So I appreciate y'all and then thank you for that. Mr. Yeo.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Council President Doja.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Clemente, always good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Let me start with the anti-displacement tax relief for a minute. Just, could you say again how many applications you have that haven't, that you haven't been able to fulfill?
Kim, if my memory serves me, I think it's about 325.
Okay. So you've got 425 in the program and another 325 potentially that you could expand to.
Yes.
If I, am I doing the math correctly? On your second page, the anti-displacement tax relief, the total payments of roughly 33,425 recipients, so average payment's about $72, is that right?
Yeah. If your math is much faster than mine, I would, I would need a calculator soon. Okay, I'll believe you.
So the 33,000 is how much money went out the door for this program?
Correct.
You've got 425 folks.
Correct.
So it's relatively a small amount per household right now. Obviously that could go up over the course of the 20 years.
Right. And that's what we actually do is we look at, because we had one, taxes went up by 2,781 last year, if you recall, was council district four.
Yep.
So we calculate best case scenario, worst case scenario of taxes, how much would they go up? And we just feel like if we promised you for 20 years, we better have enough money to support that 20 years.
Got it. Do we have any sense, I mean, according to census data that I can find, there's somewhere between 80 and 90,000 folks over 60 in the city of Atlanta. Do we have any sense though of, within these eligibility requirements, what's the potential universe here? I mean, we've got, you've got 425 on the program, you've got 325 that potentially could be in the program, applied already, that's 750. Do we have any sense of how many people could be eligible?
We do. I don't know the number off the top. We had a whole analysis done to look at what the universe would be. And that's how, that's the document that we use to go fundraise for this to begin with. So I do have it and I'm sorry, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
That's okay. It'd be.
I can send that to you.
It'd be helpful if you could send it. Yeah, I'm curious, yeah, I'm just curious how much penetration we're getting on this program.
Yep.
Which obviously we are all in support of. Let me move to tax application districts for a moment. Our, seems to be our issue de jour these days around here. I have a technical question that I'm hoping you can answer.
Oh, me too.
So obviously there's a proposal that's out around extending the TADS. Does an extension from a technical standpoint require no changes? And what I mean by that, except for the timeframe. So what I mean by that is if you were to change the tax digest year, would that be not extendable anymore, you're creating a new TAD? If you were to move the lines at all on the existing TAD, would that no longer be eligible for an extension? Would it require a new TAD? I'm just.
Yes, that's true.
True for both?
Yeah, we, yes, we cannot do either of those two things.
So you can't change the tax digest at all? It has to be what the tax, what the, the year of the original tax digest when the TAD was adopted.
Correct.
And you can't move the boundaries at all of the TAD?
No.
Or else you're creating a new TAD.
And then you would have to reset the tax digest. You would have to reset at today's tax digest.
And you'd have to reset because you would create a new one and you can only create a new TAD on today's tax digest.
Correct. Right. So what it means is we cannot, the percent of the tax digest that can be in a TAD is no greater than 10%. And so, so the challenge would be if we do any of those things and we then open up that and then we would be above that 10% threshold.
Right. Unless you were to, unless you were eliminate some of the TADS, namely the Beltline TAD.
Exactly.
So, okay. But you, but it's, there's, there's no sort of tweaking of it in an extension scenario?
No.
Good, that's helpful. Let me just go to the 2025 TAD activity for a minute.
Yes.
Help me understand, on this chart, I would have expected the housing unit column to be more full. You have affordable housing units in several of the common columns, but then there are not housing units where I would expect all of them. Is it like Amsterdam Walk, it says 135 affordable units. Is that the total of all units in Amsterdam Walk?
No.
So why wouldn't there be numbers in the housing units in that column?
I would think that we probably just omitted putting that, but I can make sure that it's corrected and send it back out.
Yeah, because I mean.
And you won't believe it, I have my glasses on and I still have any trouble seeing it.
Yeah, because it, it seems odd because you go, you go down a little bit to your 2025 TAD activity, you've got 1,800 total units, 1,200 of which are affordable.
I think it's just an omission, sir. I'll make sure it's corrected and updated.
Yeah, I don't think that's, yeah, I don't think that's quite correct.
I'll get that corrected today.
So a follow-up question to that though, when you talk about the impact, when we're talking about a lot of these projects, and especially the larger ones, have affordable housing as a significant portion of the TAD investment, right?
Correct.
Like Amsterdam Walk, like, what's it, West End Station's another good one, right? In essence, the TAD is really aimed at affordability in that case.
That's correct.
So my question is, is it fair to say that the TAD in those instances is actually leading to the project happening? Or is it more fair to say that the TAD activity there is? Or is it more fair to say that the TAD activity there is making sure it's affordable?
How, can it be both?
Well, you try to convince me, cause I'm not convinced. I'm not, here's, here's my problem with framing it that way, which looks fantastic. But the problem is, if some, if they didn't do affordability on a project like Amsterdam Walk, I, they'd still do the project, they just wouldn't do it with affordability. The project would still pencil out, wouldn't it?
I would have to say, we'd have to go back and look at the numbers. There's, let me just tell you the, the difficulty right now. And, uh, first, it's interest rates.
Sure.
Although it's coming down. We, we've seen, I've, you talked to some developers, they'll say the cost of developing has gone up almost 50%. Let's say this developer was a little bit exaggerating, but I think we could all agree about 30, 40%, we all feel prices have gone up.
Sure.
So it's just making these projects much more difficult, and then add on top of that labor. So the cost to doing these projects has increased. And then on top of that, if you're bringing into the project the affordability component, it makes it that much harder. So to me, whether it would pencil or not, I'd have to go back and look at the, the Amsterdam Walk or any of our projects. But what developers are saying is that they do really need our infusion. Now, the way the TAD works on, like, the Belt Line TAD and some of ours, there is a requirement. You want us, then we have to have affordability. That's why I say both.
I understand that. I think I would just caution us a little bit for taking credit. In the situations in which we've got big commercial developments, where we are basically putting TAD money in to do affordability, I would caution us all to then take credit for actually inducing the activity itself. Because the alternative to that activity is not that it won't happen necessarily, it's that it might not happen affordably. And so I, I just, especially within this whole TAD debate that we're having and all the questions we're having, I just think that we all ought to, ought to realize that affordability is a great thing, and investing in affordability is a great thing. But investing in affordability is a specific use, that maybe it's both, but I think the more we invest in affordability, we may just be, in essence, investing in affordability and not necessarily being the catalyst for the go-no-go on the overall project. There are projects on your list that I would argue are go-no-go, with or without, without the TAD funding, they wouldn't go. But I think there are several of those big projects on the list that likely just would not have affordability components in them. Especially because, according to your numbers, over 85% of the projects this year have basically been in non-distressed neighborhoods. They've been, according, that's, the way, your numbers, 17% in distressed neighborhoods.
Right, 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 in disinvested neighborhoods, yeah.
Disinvested neighborhoods. The others are thus in not disinvested neighborhoods. So I think, I think, I think we just need to be cautious about to make sure we know what we're investing in.
Okay, fair.
I'm done.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from colleagues? Uh, C N, uh, thank you for being here. Uh, I know, know I'm being told that I think we're, we may be having a TAD public hearing on November the 10th, which is a Monday, not our normal scheduled CDHS day due to the Veterans Day holiday, so hopefully-
I'll see you on the 10th.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. So doesn't, that, that does conclude our presentations and reports section of our agenda today. That takes us to G, uh, where we have two public hearing items.
Item number one, 2501491, may we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, the public hearing is open. 2501491, a substitute ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Piedmont Park Master Plan as the City of Atlanta's Master Plan for Piedmont Park, to incorporate the Piedmont Park Master Plan into the City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan and for other purposes.
Do we have anyone sign up for a public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, got a motion to close the public hearing? I'll make a second.
The vote is open? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, the public hearing is closed. May we have a motion to approve? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. That takes us to item number two, 2501492, may we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, the public hearing is open. 2501492, a substitute ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to adopt the Chastain Park Master Plan as the City of Atlanta's Master Plan for Chastain Park, to incorporate the Chastain Park Master Plan into the City of Atlanta's Comprehensive Development Plan, Plan A, and for other purposes.
Have anyone here for a public comment?
No.
Okay. So before we close public comment, I would like to give Ms. Buckner the floor to kind of tell us about these two items that we have before us. One, we just approved, and this one, uh, that we're discussing here regarding Chastain Park.
Okay. Um, Piedmont or Chastain? Piedmont.
Both of them.
Both. Okay, I'll start with Piedmont.
Yes.
Um, thank you, Chair Winston and, uh, council members. Uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation is requesting the adoption of the Piedmont Master Plan, that, uh, it be included in Plan A, Comprehensive Development Plan. Um, the, uh, planning for this effort, um, was initiated by the Piedmont Park Conservancy, uh, in, in cooperation with the City of Atlanta Department of Parks and Recreation. The last plan that was in place was executed 25 years ago, um, with the support of DPR, and RFP was issued, and Nelson Bird Waltz was selected, along with the local consultants, Perez Planning and Design. Uh, the, uh, the plan's execution, um, hopefully will begin in, at the end of this year, uh, with key operational maintenance and improvements. Uh, the plan, uh, the plan, the full plan's implementation is envisioned to span approximately 20 years. Uh, and a fundraising for capital projects will also begin this year, uh, with a full campaign launching, uh, in 2026 for that first phase. Uh, the plan, uh, that is being proposed is also in sync with Activate ATL Recreation in Parks for All 10-Year Comprehensive Master Plan under the goal connect. Um, in terms of public engagement, um, there was a significant amount of, of that, uh, included in online survey, community input website, uh, multiple rounds of surveys, interactive maps, uh, virtual comment boards, six public input events, uh, four interactive online sessions, 32 in-person and virtual, uh, stakeholder meetings, and focus groups with, uh, 60 community nonprofit and government and park user groups. Uh, and there was a steering committee of approximately 30, uh, stakeholders involved, and overall, more than 25,000 people were engaged. Um, ultimately, the plan was, is, uh, recommended for approval by NPUA and NPUB. Uh, and without going through all of the projects that are involved, um, there are 10, um, just, uh, acquisition of additional land that will, uh, allow for an amphitheater and, uh, more public art, um, uh, creating a new, uh, entrance, uh, new walking paths around Clear Creek Walk and Oak Hill, uh, equal-friendly water improvements around Lake Clarimale, as well as a path, uh, and many, many more, um, improvements. Uh, so, uh, we will be asking, so again, the, the plan, um, uh, is a phased plan, um, and, um, talks about improving Piedmont Park within zones. So, uh, we will be asking for adoption of the plan, and thank you for that. And then, um, moving into Chastain Master Plan, oh, I also wanna say that I am here with the, um, with the consultant, uh, excuse me, the, um, Piedmont Park Conservancy, um, CEO, Doug Widener. As it relates to Chastain Park Comprehensive Master Plan, uh, and the consultant is here, Matt Cherry, with Lord Aiken Sargent, and, uh, the Pied, the Chastain Park, um, Conservancy Executive Director, Rosa McHugh. We are also asking for adoption of Discover Chastain, the Master Plan, to be included in the 2025 Plan A Comprehensive Development Plan. Uh, it, um, replaces the plan that was done in 2008, uh, as they have realized, um, I think, all but one accomplishment, um, in that plan. Uh, the new plan spans 20 years. It is also in sync with Activate ATL Recreation in Parks for All under the goal connect. Uh, in terms of community engagement, uh, there were five public meetings, uh, at the park, uh, two online surveys with more than 1,500 respondents, nine steering committee meetings, 60 park partner meetings, uh, and invitations to the community were made through social media, the Chastain Conservancy website, pop-up studios in the park, and signs in the park. The plan has, um, uh, the following, um, goals or themes, uh, protect nature and preserve heritage, expand access to passive green space, strengthen community connection, celebrate the arts, culture, and education, and connect the park experience. It identifies, uh, three, 33 major, uh, improvements, uh, and there are nine major areas, uh, for, um, projects that are, have been identified in the first phase. Uh, this plan is also a 20-year plan, um, I'm sorry, with the first three, in the first three years of the plan, um, the proposal includes renovating the Witch's Cave, creating a trailhead and gateway to the cave, improving pedestrian access at Powers Ferry and Chastain Park Avenue, which will definitely be an improvement, uh, developing the Palisades area to this beautiful, um, active, open space, um, renovating and expanding the pool and aquatic complex, and then expanding the NYO gym. So again, we are asking for approval and for this to be, uh, incorporated into, uh, Plan A. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
May it approval.
Oh, we gotta close the public, come, public hearing first, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
One moment. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, the public hearing is closed.
And now I make a motion to approve the plan.
Second.
The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
And I did wanna point out, we've been joined by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond.
That takes us to Section H, Communications. If there is no objection from the committee, can we take items three and four together? Both of these items will be held.
Please proceed.
25C0119, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Monique Fields to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Development and PAC Fee Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. 25C0120, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Matthew Cartlich to serve as a member of the Atlanta Urban Design Commission in the Landscape Architect category. This appointment is for a term of three years.
Make a motion to hold those two items. We have a second by Wes Morland.
The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, these items are held in committee. That takes us to our consent, consent agenda. Item number five, 2501593, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to accept the Historic Preservation Fund Grant from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, an amount not to exceed $22,200.00 for the preservation of his history regarding African-Americans who made foundational efforts to secure silver, civil and human rights in Atlanta. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 intergovernmental grant fund by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount of $22,200.00 to authorize the mayor or his designate to enter into agreements to accept the grant and to implement the grant project and for other purposes. Item number six, 2501594, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate or the chief procurement officer or her designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to acquire from the Conservation Fund nine parcels comprising approximately 2.48 acres, more or less, of real property located at 99 Ingram Street, Southwest Fulton County. Tax parcel ID number listed, Zero Plaza Avenue, Southwest Fulton County, tax parcel ID number listed, and parcels along Ingram Drive, Southwest Fulton County, tax parcel ID numbers listed, for the expansion of the City of Atlanta's Outdoor Activity Center in Southwest Atlanta for a total purchase price not to exceed $350,937.22, authorizing the mayor or his designate or the chief procurement officer or her designate on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property. Authorizing acquisition, due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolitions, site stabilization, and other site development costs to be paid from the Park Impact Fee West account, amending the 2026 General Government Capital Outlay Fund budgets in the Department of Parks and Recreation and Department of Finance, Park West Service District by transferring to and from the various accounts listed herein, waiving Section 2-1541D of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City Code of Ordinances and for other purposes. Item number seven, 2501595, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate or the chief procurement officer or her designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to acquire from the Conservation Fund, uh, parcel of land comprising of approximately, approximately 17.57 acres, more or less, of real property located at Zero James Jackson Parkway Northwest, Fulton County, tax parcel ID number listed, for the expansion of the City of Atlanta Park commonly and currently known as Riverwalk Park, for a total purchase price not to exceed $220,721.44, authorizing the mayor or his designate or the chief procurement officer or her designate on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property, authorizing acquisition, due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolitions, site stabilization, and other site development costs to be paid from the Park Impact Fee North account, amending the 2026 General Government Capital Outlay Fund budgets in the Department of Parks and Recreation and Department of Finance, Parks North Service District by transferring to and from the various accounts listed herein, waiving Section 2-1541D of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City Code of Ordinances and for other purposes. Item number eight, 2501596, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta and the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into the second renewal option for contract number listed, on-call, post-certified officers with Cloverhurst Aaron for one year commencing on November 1st, 2025, and ending on November 31st, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $1,000.00 to continue providing security needs at various parks and recreation sites and for other purposes. Item number nine, 2501597, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta and the Department of Parks and Recreation to retroactively reinstate agreement number listed, on-call, post-certified officers with Metropolitan Security Associates, to enter into the first renewal option for one year commencing on August 9th, 2025, and ending on August 8th, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $1,000.00 to continue providing security needs at various parks and recreation sites, to waive all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to ratify all actions taken by or on behalf of the city since the date of expiration of the agreement and for other purposes. Item number 10, 2501598, CDP 2529, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of 2025 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at 1669 Stanton Road, Southwest, from the MLSF Development Pattern Designation- Development Pattern Designation to the LDR Development Pattern Designation and for other purposes.
Thank you, and Councilmember Dozier had a question about one of the first read items.
Yes, and I recognize most of the, thank you, Mr. Chair, I recognize most of the DPR folks stepped out after the public hearing that we had earlier. But for those out there listening, whether with the department or with the administration, I did have a question about ordinance 25-0-1594, which is the expansion of the Outdoor Activity Center, which is in District 4. I know I've been working with both DPR as well as the Conservation Fund on identifying some of the parcels surrounding the Outdoor Activity Center for potential acquisition and for adding those into the footprint of the site. And this appears to be related to those earlier conversations that we had, and I would love to have a briefing from the department or from the administration about what is being proposed with this ordinance, and just so I can make sure I can communicate that effectively with my constituents. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to our regular agenda. Item number 11, 2501577, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services to ratify and accept a monetary donation from the Arthur M. Blank Family Foundation in an amount not to exceed $17,500.00 to support the city's participation in the Listen for Good Capacity Building cohort, cohort, to amend the FY26 budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in an amount not to exceed $17,500.00. All funds to be charged to and paid from the fund account listed herein and for other purposes.
We appreciate that donation. I will make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. That takes us to item number 12, 2501578, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee amending the FY2026 Intergovernmental Grant Fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in the amount of $1,112,208.00 to increase the budget amount for the Santa Fe Villa Housing Complex, and authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into a housing assisted payments contract with GNS Santa Fe Villa effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026, in amount not to exceed $1,112,208.00 for the purpose of paying rental subsidies for 100 units for low-income formerly homeless individuals at Santa Fe Villa Housing Complex pursuant to the Section 8 Moderate Rehabilitation Program sponsored by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon, Genevieve Jones, Compliance Director for Department of Grants and Community Development. We made this caption very long to cover everything, but this is just a renewal of our subsidies that we have at Santa Fe Villas for formerly homeless individuals. We have 100 units there.
I have a motion to approve, it's been properly seconded by Councilmember Dozier. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. That takes us to item number 13, 2501579, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend ordinance 2301096, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on February 20th, 2023, 2023, and approved by Operation of Law on March 1st, 2023, for the purpose of amending the quorum requirement of the Chattahoochee Brick Memorial Green Space and Park Board and for other purposes.
Thank you. Is Mr. Gallanting? Thank you, just maybe briefly tell us why we're changing the quorum requirements?
Yeah, so the, the current board, the quorum is three, and we have our consultants on board, and a lot of the neighborhood representatives represent, a lot of the representatives on the board also represent other neighborhood organizations and are very entrenched in the community, and this would allow us to have them serve in that way as well, specifically so that that would, the quorum going to five would allow five of these, of these individuals to be on the steering committee, and the steering committee is not, the, the board is public, but the steering committee is, is more private, and they would just have different meetings offline and kind of, I know, a lot of you know how the steering committees work, but that would be the idea, was be able to have more representation that represents a lot of the different West Side neighborhoods, and that they wouldn't run into quorum issues if they're also meeting for this steering committee.
I have a motion to approve, I will second. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. That takes us to item number 14, 2501591, an ordinance by councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Jason H. Winston, Alex Wong, Jason Dozier, Dustin Hillis, and Liliana Batiari to amend the Charter of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, 1996, Georgia laws, adopted under and by virtue of the authority of the Municipal Home Rule, Home Rule Act of 1965, as amended by amending Part 1 Charter and related laws, Subpart A Charter, Article 6 Revenue and Fund Administration, Chapter 3 Fiscal Control, Section 6-315 Fund Balance Policy, to more explicitly define the purpose of and the uses for the dedicated requirements related, did I read that right? No, for the dedicated affordable housing fund to provide for certain reporting requirements related thereto and for other purposes. This item has a substitute, may we have a motion to bring forth the substitute? The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, the substitute is before you.
If I motion to hold, I will second.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item is held in committee. That takes us to Section K Resolutions, 25R4088. A resolution by Councilmember Mary Norwood to ensure fiscal responsibility and to allow for the conduct of appropriate due diligence by declaring it to be the desire of the Atlanta City Council that certain prerequisites shall occur prior to the adoption of any legislation to extend or establish sunset dates of the eight tax alloc, the eight active tax allocation districts of the City of Atlanta, that these prerequisites shall include that the fiscal year 2027 shall be adopted, that the Atlanta Independent School System Board and the Fulton County Commission shall agree to the extension of the sunset dates of tax allocation districts, that the Atlanta City Council shall receive a report detailing the increment received, expenses generated, and fund balances for each tax allocation district during each year it has been authorized, and that the Atlanta, Atlanta City Council shall receive a report detailing showing the remaining funds raised through the 2022 move in Atlanta for bond issuance and, and the T-spots, and how much, and how such funds have been utilized to date and for other purposes.
Colleagues, this is my legislation. I'd like to make a motion to hold. We will be having the public hearing on the 10th, and that will be the opportunity to discuss the provisions of this legislation as well as other issues pertaining to the TAS.
Councilmember Bond, would like the?
Motion to amend, add Mr. Bond's name to the legislation. I remove the motion to hold until we have made the amendment. Thank you, sir.
One moment. Can you repeat the mover and seconder for the amendment, please?
Motion by Councilmember Norwood, second by Councilmember Westmoreland.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item has been amended.
Motion to hold the legislation.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item has, is held in committee. That takes us to Section L Papers Held in Committee, item number 39. 2501562, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier to amend the Land Use Planning Section of the 2025 Plan A City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to redesignate property located at Zero People Street, Southwest, from the Low Density Residential Development Pattern Designation to the Medium Density Residential Classification and for other purposes. This item will need to be amended to include the property map.
Kind of motion to amend, it's been properly seconded. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item has been amended. We would need a motion to rehold this item.
Kind of motion to hold, I will second. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays, this item has been held in committee. That concludes our legislative items.
Thank you. Any parting words or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.